Joe Nevz. Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboen.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
President. This is today, so at this time, we go to interpatient and we have Spider, Dr. Tyler Jones of Today Church Online.
Good morning, everyone. Um, bow your heads and close your eyes with me. Father, we just thank you for who you are. We thank you, God, for these boards of supervisors, and I just pray over them, Lord, that you would give them clarity as they make decisions today, and that you would give them strength, Lord God. We just thank you in your word, it says that you give us peace that is beyond understanding, and we just thank you and honor you in Jesus's name, amen.
They call me in the. Ready? I'm like. You can see it from there. And see that they follow it. Well, here's. I do have. We're good. At this time, we have a special presentation, Chief Speaker Rudy Scully, of the Department of Transportation. So this time, I'll take over the.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think that's. I can have the folks from Avenel, Kirsten.
It's all. Thank you.
Where's, um, where's the mayor? Anthony? She lives here too, right? She up? Want to join us? Councilman? Lana? Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank the board for this time. Uh, members of the board, I'm joined here, uh, with leadership from the city of Avenel, um, on this beautiful cooler morning. Uh, we have Mayor Alvaro Preciado, uh, City Manager Anthony Lopez, our Kings County, uh, Board of Education Commissioner Mary Gonzalez Gomez, uh, Avenel City Councilmember, um, Mr. Rodrigo Ricardo, and his wife Sheila, and some other, uh, members right here. Uh, just right off the bat, the lady in front of me, many of you may know Kirsten Robinson and her son Josh, and this morning is about, is about them. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Kirsten Robinson is a lifelong resident of Avenel and an exemplary community leader. She graduated from Avenel High School as class president in two thousand and seven, followed by West Hills College in two thousand and nine. She earned her bachelor's degree in sociology from California State University Fresno, and a master's degree in social work from Calif- uh, from California State University Stanislas. Kirsten founded the community closet Avenel First Baptist Church, providing essential resources to families in need, and has served on the city's recreation committee, enhancing recreational opportunities for our residents. In two thousand and twelve, Kirsten became a mother to Joshua, to Josh Salgada, and has shown remarkable resolent, resilience as a solo parent since Joshua was one year old following the passing of his father. Despite personal challenges, Kirsten continues to make a significant impact, uh, to her professional role working with foster youth, embodying compassion and dedication. Her unwavering commitment to her community and family make her a deserving recipient of this recognition. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we're here this morning because a couple of months ago, the Women's World Magazine, along with Colossal Management and Children's Miracle Network Hospitals, they started this, uh, competition and they labeled it as Super Mom twenty twenty-four competition. Uh, there was a grand prize at the end of the, of the competition, there was a lot of voting going on, and right off the bat, when, uh, this hit social media, you saw the community of Avenel rally behind Kirsten and the many members of the county joining in, and I believe that sometimes it was daily votes and weekly votes over the course of a few weeks where you saw Kirsten advance competitively across, uh, other mothers in the contest across the nation. Um, but one thing, um, from the very beginning, I know the first time I saw this and I said, whoa, Kirsten's in this competition, right off the bat, uh, my first thought, as many others, is Kirsten has always been a one thousand percent certified super mom, and, uh, she didn't need that contest to show that, and I say this because, um, I'm clear, do we have a couple of pictures that may be queued up? Just, uh, over the years, uh, from meeting, um, Kirsten, uh, around oh eight, about the time I started spending a lot of time in Avenel and, um, just seeing her, uh, over the years, um, as you, as you heard about her community service and all the things she's done and focusing on her education. I don't know where she finds the time, but she takes this young man everywhere, right Josh? Josh is, Josh has seen more of the world than I have, and I, and I'm gonna be fifty-four, Josh. Uh, your mother Kirsten, uh, I mean, it's, it's very common to wake up on a Saturday morning and see them at the Grand Canyon or on the East Coast, or, uh, uh, a nice trip to places that, uh, uh, I haven't even, uh, heard of or seen, just even on the West Coast, and so, um, uh, you know, Kirsten, one thing I never shared with you is that, um, about three months before I was born, uh, my father, he drowned at Bass Lake, so I saw my mother grow up, um, uh, with the struggles that she had, and, uh, to see how, how you've, uh, you know, took, well, life put at you and Josh, and, and you made it to where, uh, you, you, you know, you made it a beautiful thing at a time when you could have went the other way, and because of that, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board, we want to take this time to, uh, recognize and declare today, uh, Kirsten Robinson as a super mom, uh, district two. Uh, Mr. Chair, we're gonna have a couple of folks say a few words, say a few words, but we do have, um, some nice gifts here. Uh, I know some of your friends from, uh, the Chris Com Company, uh, that, that work in the city of Avenel, they, they know that you guys like to go bowling at the Tachi Entertainment Center, and so Chris Com Company has sent a nice, uh, gift card for two hundred dollars. So go, you and Josh, go bow, get you a couple of strikes. What else we have? The, uh, our friend, our friends at Dave and Buster's, there's, there's a friend right there, Josh. Our friends at Dave and Buster's, uh, they sent a little goody bag, I'm gonna leave that in here, but Josh, so your mom can take you, there's four preloaded credits on here, so you could go, uh, get your fun on, I, I ran up there yesterday to pick these up. There's a lot of cool, exciting new games there, so you're gonna have fun there, okay Josh? All right, and then, uh, uh, Josh, Josh got his mother, these beautiful, uh, two dozen, two dozen roses right there. Okay, and then, uh, we'll, we'll let the community say a couple of words, Mr. Chair, and then maybe we can get a nice photo in the well together with Kirsten. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, uh, board supervisor members. I just would like to thank you for the opportunity that you guys giving our community member Kristi Robinson for this award. I wanna say thank you, our community is really united, we're really focused on, uh, having, uh, an offering that, that needs of the community, you know, provide the services, the quality services that they need, but, uh, we're really proud to receive this, this award, and I would like to congratulate Kristi Robinson and thank you, and also our supervisor for district two for making this possible, thank you.
All right, good morning, uh, honorable chair and supervisors. First off, just, uh, wanna thank Supervisor Valley for always kinda keeping Avenel in mind and recognizing our unique and special people. Do you wanna say I've known Kirsten since back in high school, we're not that much different age-wise, but, um, Kirsten's always been a kind and graceful individual, and now being able to kinda serve the community and working alongside with her and seeing a lot of the great stuff she's already doing, and she comes, she'll bring up some issues to me time to time, and you know, she's, she's very thoughtful for what we can do for the whole community, and likewise, yes, it's pretty inspiring, the work that she does, the work she does with her, with her son, and still continues to give back to the community, so just wanna, once again, round of applause for Kirsten because she's what, she's what makes Avenel special.
Good morning, um, I'm here representing Kings County Board of Education, Mary Gonzalez Gomez, District Two is, um, part of the, um, I represent that, and Avenel, and I'm here to help celebrate and to share in the celebration of, of Kirsten, and I thank you for your dedication, your commitment for all you do in community service, and it's not a, an easy thing to do, especially during these times in, in raising children, thank you very, very much, congratulations.
I do. Um, I just wanna say that I've known Kirsten basically her whole life, and it has been a pleasure and a, and a blessing, right? I've watched her be such a beautiful soul, not just to her, her child, but, you know, to, to the community, and she has been something very special to me. Um, I know her parents are sitting in this audience, and I gotta say, thank you for bringing this beautiful person into this world to give us more light than there is darkness, right? She is, she has been a great mother, a great friend, uh, a great community leader, um, and the work that she does is priceless, right? And I'm sure there's people in this room that does social working, and it's hard stuff, and she still gets to go home and give this little boy a beautiful life, and so I just wanna say thank you Kirsten for being a part of my life and for making it better, and thank you for raising this amazing, amazing young man. And Brody, thank you for pouring into her what she's now pouring into this community, so thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, we'll wrap up with the, uh, um, the resolution, uh, Board of Supervisors, County Kings, certificate appreciation presented Kirsten Robinson in celebration of your unwavering commitment to your community and being a super mom in District Two. Uh, but I'm sure the board feels countywide, and we thank you, and this is for you, and you come up here.
Thank you.
We come on up there.
Thank you. Oh, speech, oh, you're gonna tell me a thing. Um, no, just, thank you, thank you all for having me and Richard for just, um, for putting this out there and giving me the opportunity. The city of Avenel, um, I feel definitely can get a little overlooked sometimes, and it's such a beautiful community, and so to have support, um, to have Avenel literally behind me and, um, having it just pour into me for thirty-something years, I won't reveal the exact age, but, um, for having it pour into me as long as it has, has just been so, so awesome, and so thank you guys for, um, this recognition, and it's kinda nice to see that some internet fun competition turned into this, so thank you guys, I appreciate it.
I love you, Mom.
Supervisor Valley, if I could say one thing, you know, on behalf of the Kings County Board of Supervisors, uh, you know, thank you for bringing us to our attention. I know this means a lot to you, I could hear in your voice, the way you were brought up and how your single mother made the law key to, to recognize this, so I fully understand why you did this, and Kirsten, congratulations, thank you for being a role model for Avenel.
Let's get a picture in the well. Come on in. You're gonna be in there too, Sheila?
Hey, hey.
Say, Mom, the dad wants to come up. Leave me, please.
Yeah.
Photos will be available in the lobby for five dollars. Hey, hey guy, we'll give you the ticket. Couple months will handle Candy Cane. All right, smile, everyone, say Christmas. Yeah.
All right, I took three.
Halfway there.
I'm going this way. Joe, you guys all back there? Oh wait, Richard, Richard's running. He's running. Are you ready, one, two, three? I'm gonna get one this way.
Yeah, makes me look skinnier that way.
Ah!
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and go to unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are, are allowed, and we have clocks now in case anybody gets out of control, but we're pretty, we're pretty good, we don't like keep you too, too close to it, but keep it down or go repeat yourself, we appreciate it, so at this time, do we have any?
I have no written correspondence, but the first speaker is Dwayne Cooper.
Morning, Dwayne. How you doing?
I'm here on behalf of my, my men. When we hire, the, most of them start out as one if they don't have their Class A's or Bs. Soon as they get their license, they're here a couple more months, they're gone. That's why we need to raise their pay. It's, um, I got a forty-year career here. Believe it or not, second time around, it's thirty-one. It's real hard nowadays, especially the way the money is. So, I just hope you guys do the right thing, all the way across. Even, we had a meeting with unrepresented management. Longevity paid for our sick leave is a big deal, would be a big deal for everybody. That would make them wanna stay. We want them to stay anyway because we put the money and the time into them to train, to teach them to become good workers. And, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Dwayne, appreciate you coming forward.
The next speaker is Robert Angel.
Robert, morning. How you doing today?
Good, how's stuffs?
Good. Thank you for coming.
It's getting, I'm a little, a little nervous, but, um, hi, my name's Robert, I'm a road maintenance worker for, like, uh, roads division. Uh, been working for the county a little over nine years now, and, you know, we're behalf here to talk about, you know, the studies that we've done and you know, how far behind we are, we're, we were like fifteen percent behind or paid from other, um, counties and cities and stuff like that, and, um, you know, just, uh, you know, I hope you guys know that we, we, like Dwayne said, to reiterate what Dwayne said, you know, we are pretty behind and, you know, we have a lot of workers that don't wanna stay. You know, they're here to get their Class A, better than, they supposedly wanna better themselves, and I don't, my ten years here, or nine years here, I've seen ten, twelve people leave, and we talked to the guys and we have quite a bit more that are ready to leave, because the pay's not enough, it's just, you know, the little bit that we get here and there, it's just, it's, it's pretty severe for the guys that wanna buy houses, start a family, you know, it's just, it's not like it was ten years ago, like, when I started, you know, it wasn't horrible, you know, everything keeps going up, our wages increase a little bit, but everything else skyrockets, food, everything else, um, you know, like I said, we're, we're up here with, with our guys here, we maintain our roads, you know, we make sure everything runs safely as we can, you know, and I hope you guys taking consideration too the lifestyle we, we put ourselves in, you know, because just the other day, some, one of our guys almost got hit going through a road closure sign. You know, they don't pay attention, you know, and these guys don't wanna not have enough pay, and then the risk that we're putting in ourselves, and every day, we don't know if we're gonna go in to our families every day because of, you don't know if somebody's drunk. You know, my first week when I first started, we almost got hit from behind because somebody was going extremely fast. You know, e- every day we go on that road, as soon as we step foot on that pavement, our lives are at risk. You know, and we don't see no increase, we see nothing, you know, from what everything else happens, um, you know, like, as we're here on our behalf of our own time, you know, we're here, we had to shut down our chip seals today to come and talk to you guys and hopefully open your guys' eyes and to see what we go through every day, and you know, the struggles that a lot of our guys are going through right now, with pay raises and, and stuff like that, because if we don't make changes, we're gonna keep losing people every, every single time. To them, they're like, we're gonna give my Class As or Bs, and I'm not here. We just lost two, three people in the last, last year for that same reason, 'cause not enough pay, they're going somewhere else, you know, whether it be not even a county job, you know? I, I, I thought of myself as a government agency, we should be top tier, you know, when I first started. I was proud of it, and I still am, you know, we, all our guys, we're all proud of it, we all wanna stay, every single one of us, we don't wanna leave. But at the end of the day, they have to provide for their families, and we should be that agency that provides for our families, not having to get second jobs just to maintain, you know, with a good living, or what a good living is, and I just don't feel that's right, you know? I, when I first started, I had to do second jobs just to maintain a decent living. You know, we're, we're good off now, but, you know, the new guys coming in is just, it sucks for them to get this such short pay, no longevity, nothing, nothing's coming up, and just sucks for our guys, I really do hope you guys can take that consideration. I'd like to thank all my guys, our union members, um, the SEIU for backing us up. I know we got a proposal, I think they offered us five percent on behalf of the studies that came out, that were fifteen percent unpaid, they wanna give us point five. I don't see where that's right. Um, logically doesn't make sense, you know? Pretty sure everything's gone up more than five percent in the last year or so, whatever, you know, so, um, I just hope when we go into bargaining, you guys think about it, and hopefully you guys will give us something, I, I understand we probably won't get the full fifteen, but something for these guys to entice them to stay longer, not just lose them, 'cause we are supposed to be, I thought in my head, why, you know, everybody that we talk to, they think you work for the county, you could pay great, and everybody's like, well, I can get paid better somewhere else. And I don't think we as counties employees, I don't think we should be underpaid like that, and you know, I, I thank you guys for your time, that's all I got, and, uh, I appreciate you guys, thank you.
The next speaker is Eduardo Batista.
Morning, Eduardo. How you doing today?
Good, and yourself?
Thank you for coming.
Good morning, you guys, uh, my name is Eduardo Oquita, and, uh, I've been a, or I'm a road maintenance worker three, I've been here for going on three years, and I'm a proud member of SEIU. I wanted to share with you this morning a concern my coworkers and I have, as county workers, we have taken our own time to be here, and, uh, this morning to support our bargaining team. As you may know, we have a retention issue because of low wages in some of our blue collar classifications, and as a result, a loss of experienced workers to private companies and other hiring pay, paying public agencies across the region. Everyone in blue collar works hard every day to take care of the public and employees across the county facilities. We have an important role in this county. Our janitors keep our workspaces clean, our road maintenance workers keep our roads safe, fleet services keep our vehicles rolling, building maintenance keep the lights on, and parks keep our parks presentable for the public. All this allows our community to enjoy what the county has to offer and make interaction when seeking services more pleasant and professional. Our bargaining team has been meeting with your representatives to negotiate in good faith to try to address the retention concern as well as wages that will make us, uh, more competitive. We have proposed a ten-year and fifteen-year longevity bonus. If you read your own study, you will see that the number of blue collar positions are behind the rest of other cities and counties we were compared to. At the road yard, we came in thirteenth out of thirteenth place, that, you know, that, that was last place. But, um, but across the entire blue collar unit, the study averages at three percent across the board. We will not be able to make up the entire disparity this study uncovered for some of our classifications, but you can help close the gap. A half a percent increase with the road yard is not a good start. Our bargaining team has put forward proposals that we feel are reasonable and address not only concerns with wages but with retention and recruitment, providing the longevity bonuses and across the board raise and bring in certain classifications closer to competitive wages and some of the proposals we have put across the table. I wanna thank you for taking the time to listening to our concerns and ask the Board of Supervisors to, uh, the Board of Supervisors work with our union to reach a deal that retains experienced workers, thank you, you guys.
Thank you, Eduardo.
The next speaker is Carolyn Leest.
Morning, Carolyn. How are you today?
Chairman, members of the board, Carolyn Leest, can you hear me? Um, I'm here today to introduce, um, Jessica Cervantes. Uh, she started, uh, yesterday with our department, um, in fact, she actually has worked with us before. Um, she worked with human resources, um, from March twenty, uh, twenty nineteen to October twenty twenty-one. Um, when she left the county, she went back to get her associate's and bachelor's degree, um, and began working for the Navy Exchange, uh, Command Service as a human resources generalist. Um, we're happy that she applied for a personnel technician and that she's back to the county, and, um, we're welcome here today, I just wanna let know departments that we have a new technician to help with recruitment and payroll.
Welcome.
Hi, good morning, everyone, so I just wanna say that I'm very happy to be back here at the county and to provide services, you know, to all our departments and my, um, as a, uh, personnel technician, and also to service those, uh, community candidates, you know, 'cause we do provide services, a lot of internal services and services to the outside, so I'm very happy to be back.
Thank you, thanks for coming back.
The next speaker is Sarah Hacker.
Hi, Sarah.
Good morning, this distinguished board, I'm here to speak up on behalf of all of Kings County's employees and team members. Yesterday, the Republican National Convention opened up and we saw the same recurring themes, high prices of groceries, rent, gas. High prices of groceries, rent, gas, inflation, and slow wage growth. Even we saw the Teamsters president, first time speaking at the Republican National Convention, talking about wage and inflations. These themes are echoed in our county and we've seen it today. I just want to thank everybody at SEIU for standing up and asserting their rights. And we've seen it again and again and again. We saw it with FIRE, we saw it with DSA, we see it with SEIU. We saw it with Public Works last week, we're seeing it with the Prosecutors Union. And despite these economic forces, the county has relied on a salary survey to negotiate its wages. And the truth is, is that the salary survey is absolutely not relevant to Kings County. It began in 2022, two years ago, and our economic situation has changed nationally and here in this county. The market has changed, labor is so tight right now, we see it throughout our, all of our positions here. The salary survey wasn't complete, they did not look at the vacancy rates of the other counties that they, they had surveyed. They just compared what was on, what was the salary for one county versus what was the salary for another county versus what was the salary for the city. And they didn't look to see if those salary rates were actually attracting meaningful, good candidates that were willing to invest in our county. They don't consider the labor market and they focused on the median. And this is what I really want to talk about today, the median. The median is not market, the median is not going to attract people who are going to come and work and dedicate themselves to this county. We heard today from SEIU, these are people that have spent years in our county, building it, making it safe. And they see the newer generation come and go, come and go, and come and go. And when you are just aiming for the median here, you're always going to see come and go, come and go. Because every county is just going to inch ahead, just a little, a little, a little, a little, a little. And until we develop a good team valued type of environment here in Kings County, we're going to lose the battle of median. One, Kings County has a smaller labor pool. We have to attract people from other areas to fill our positions here. The median does not consider gas and time for our commuters. So when we are competing with these other counties, we're offering the median, but so are they. And when an employee doesn't have to drive to work, doesn't have to spend money on gas to get to where they need to be, that's going to edge out that county. And here we have to, we're going to have to rely on people recruiting them from other areas in order for us to fill our spots. And the median does not consider the costs and time and gas and money that our employees are going to have to pay. Kings County cannot adequately mentor its next generation of team members if we're only offering the median. Recruiting, mentoring, training takes time and resources. And we maybe be able to get candidates who are young, who are not ready for the position yet. And then we invest the time and that money and the expertise into building up these expertise, into building up our employees, but we don't offer them a salary that makes them stay. And so essentially, we're just training somebody else's team member. Lastly, Kings County cannot maintain its continuity without competitive rate wages. We're in a cycle of recruiting, hiring, training, and it's expensive. We lose our expertise, we lose our institutional knowledge, and more mistakes are opened up to county liability when we just hire newer and newer people and we don't get the time in with them to train them and to let them grow in our community. I'm asking the board to take radical action, abandon the salary survey, it's made nobody happy. Every single union has come before this board and has asked you to deviate from the salary savings because it doesn't accurately reflect who we are today. And I'd ask, we haven't approved a final budget yet. Let's try and work with our operational numbers so that we can really value our employees and pay them for what they're worth. Because we're willing to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars into Coffin Associates. Let's do the same for our employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I have, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to add today? Okay. Good, had one little one, raise your hand right there. Okay, we'll move on now to approval of the minutes, report out of closed session from regular meeting, July 2nd, 2024.
There's nothing to report.
Item B, approval of the minutes from regular meeting, July 2nd, 2024. Moved by Chief Mike Robinsons, second by Chief Mike Fagundes, matter of course, please call roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Okay, item favor, move on now to consent counter, all items on a consent counter, can be acted by one motion unless the supervisor would like to take an item out on his own. Move by Chief Mike Nev, second by Chief Mike Fagundes, matter of course, please call roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Okay, item favor, thank you. Move on now to record, calendar, and we have administration, here Martinez, but I think we're going to have a presentation from employee management, Bob Henry. Morning boss.
Morning.
How are you today?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob Henry, Senior District Manager for the Chemical Waste Management Kettleman Hills Facility. Last report, reported activities was on April 9th. So from April 9th through July 15th, report period today, past activities, a little lengthy. April 9th, Kings County Environmental Health Services and Cal Recycle at KHF, monthly unannounced facility inspection by Kings County and an 18-month unannounced facility inspection by Cal Recycle. During the inspection, no violations and no areas concerned. April 16th, DTSC at KHF for an unannounced focused compliance inspection of the final stabilization unit and our bulk storage unit, phases one and two. Also present was Kings County Environmental Health Services for the inspection, during the inspection, no violations. April 16th, Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board at KHF, semi-annual announced facility inspection, no violations. April 17th, Kings County Fire Department at KHF, follow-up on their inspection from March 15th, no violations. April 25th, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District at KHF, annual facility inspection, no violations. May 1st, Ninth Annual Community Meeting, and this was a Zoom meeting. Meeting included KHF providing groundwater changes year over year, air monitoring changes year over year, contingency plan review, and hazardous waste transportation placards review. A note, groundwater monitoring, air monitoring information was mailed to all the post office box holders in Kettleman City. So they received the information prior to the meeting that we held. Also at the meeting, and thank you, Kings County was provided family emergency preparedness strategy. So helping get the residents prepared for any type of emergency may that occur in Kettleman. May 9th, DTSC public meeting in Kettleman City. Meeting was held to discuss DTSC's renewal of KHF's Part B operating permit. It's our 10-year operating permit, every 10 years it's supposed to be renewed, gives us the opportunity to continue working. Meeting covered Ouiha's Office of Environmental Health Hazard and Assessment, their CAL EnviroScreen. That's a mapping tool that helps identify communities that are most affected by many sources of pollution. Could be pesticide pollution, it could be dyes, could be dust, things like that, as well as others. And also the DTSC violation scoring procedure. After looking at the CAL EnviroScreen, DTSC had a comment that they put in writing, it says, quote, furthermore, given the lack of clear nexus between the facility's operation and the community's existing vulnerabilities, comma, permit denial would not likely reduce or eliminate those vulnerabilities. So of the vulnerabilities that Kettleman experiences, what they're saying is they're not caused by our facility. Violation scoring procedure, if you remember, I told you zero to 20 was acceptable, 20 to 40 was conditional. Above 40, they could actually pull your permit. KHF presently is at 0.63, which is an acceptable level. Our competition here in the state, they're at 12.8, to kind of give you an idea. May 10th, KHF at the Kettleman City Foundation Senior Luncheon, KHF sponsored the luncheon and it was a Mother's Day theme. So I got to throw a few good ones in here. May 15th, DTSC Public Hearing, Kettleman City, public hearing was held for DTSC to take comments regarding the renewal of KHF's Part B operating permit. We had about 10 comments that night. So it's not like some in the past, I'll leave it at that. So, May 16th, DTSC at KHF, unannounced groundwater monitoring inspection, no violations. May 16th, US EPA Region 9 at KHF provided US EPA with facility tour and overview. May 28th, Kings County Environmental Health Services back out at KHF, monthly, monthly unannounced facility inspection, no violation, no area of concern. May 29th, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District at KHF, annual MSW flare source test, no violations. What we have on the MSW for landfills, B17 and B19, we we put a vacuum and pulled the landfill gas, 50% being methane, pull it out and we combust it right now. And what we're doing is every year you have to do an annual flare test where you check this, what is exhausting out the stack to make sure it's in compliance, and that's what we're doing there in, Air District, Air District was out to inspect that. Next one. June 11th through 13th, US EPA Region 9, US EPA Region 8, and DTSC at KHF. An announced facility inspection, seven inspectors for three days. Anybody want to come join me?
Enjoy yourself.
No violations while onsite, inspection report is still pending. We're not seeing anything that would result in, in a violation, but DTSC brought in Region 9 to help with the inspection, and they brought in Region 8, which had an NEIC inspector as well. Those are the ones that write the big tickets nationwide, and they didn't find anything. Okay, June 25th, Kings County Environmental Health Services at KHF, monthly announced facility inspection, no violations, no area of concern. July 11th, KHF Kettleman City Foundation Senior Luncheon, again, we were the sponsor, it was Independence Day theme. Future today, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution District at KHF, annual MSW flare source test, Bobby just told us about it. We're in the process of putting on a new flare. Okay, so we have a low NOx flare that we have existing and operating at the facility. We have to put in an ultra-low NOx flare, and that's what we just completed doing, all right. The ongoing new ultra-low NOx flare started on July 11th, so it's up and running last week. Now we got to do the source test on it, and then we'll turn that information in about 60 days to the, to the Air District, okay? Also under ongoing, MSW landfill B19 closure is complete. So we had two landfills, B19 was the one we started in 1998 with Kings Waste. And then in 2006, we added B17, B19 has now gone through closure. So that one's in what they call post-closure care. And then for landfill, MSW landfill B17, we've been constructing Phase C1. It has actually Phase A1, A2, which is a higher elevation, B1, B2, higher elevation. Those four phases have been constructed, C1 we just finished, we'll have C2 and C3, which are higher elevations a little bit later, but right now we just, we should have Phase C1 finished in about mid-August of this year, okay? Permitting DTSC Part B permit renewal tentative schedule. DTSC had a public comment period, okay, it started on April 3rd, goes, went through July 2nd. They extended it to July 19th, so if you have pub comments, you can get them in through July 19th. We anticipate DTSC to respond to public comments, probably late this year, they'll be done. And they'll probably then push over to the first of the year for addressing those public comments and reaching a draft permit decision. So it probably won't hear anything until the first of the year, would be my guess. I haven't had a permit yet in 30, a bunch of years, that has not been appealed. So I'm anticipating that it will get appealed, which will take probably at least about another six months. So I probably won't get a permit till probably third quarter of next year, so. So a lot of inspections, a lot of people turning over the facility, Air District, Water Board, County, DTSC, US EPA, been busy, so.
Thank you for your work and thank your staff too. I know it could go the other way really fast.
It can.
And so we appreciate the hard work you do and it's all at the great table when they come out and expect you for three days, so. Yeah, they're looking for something, so thank you for not letting them find anything. I do have a question though.
It's open, so I'm not hiding anything.
Methane gas. So, Chief Mike Nev and myself and Mr. Martinez here went on tour of Moss Energy, which captures methane gas cows. Is that something you can look at too in the future to capture the methane and use it for your equipment? It's a compressor, they got to cool it down, and it seems pretty simple, it's a small, small little plant. And I know that the, the big way, dairy, dairy way dairies have it out there, and they, they provide methane gas for their mixtures and some of the loaders. Is that something you can do in the future to get the environmental stuff your back?
Well, sustainability is something I'm looking at very hard. With sustainability and the methane gas that we generate from the two landfills, B17 and B19, I've already entered into an agreement with the company to come in. And then even though I just spent over a million, well, closer to 2 million on an ultra-low NOx flare, what we're looking to do is take that fuel that's coming out, that methane gas 50% being, or landfill gas 50% being methane, and start running a couple of engines, and then take that energy that's produced and put it back on the grid. So I have that for sustainability that we're, we've entered into and Chuck, let me see, yeah. So yes, to answer your question, a little bit different, but just use some engines, produce some, with generators, produce some power, put it back on the grid. That's one piece. The other piece is solar and coming up on my own solar farm to supply power only for our site, not for additional energy. I just don't have the topography out there to, that lends itself to doing something like that. We go just over the hill, closer to Avonon, they have a big solar farm, but with the topography I have with the rolling hills, it's not going to work. But I think I can get enough flat area to produce power through solar, at least enough to service the facility. I do about 35,000 a month in power, so, and it's going to go up.
Yeah, no, I, I just did solo line too, that will take a lot of paddles, maybe 500 paddles.
A little more, yeah.
Maybe you could engineer the top of the pond, one top of your pit to have a flatter and put your solo on.
Well, some, the, well, I have all these old landfills that I would love to put something on top of, but the state does not allow that at this time, because you'd be impacting their cap. So you have the closure cap, so I have hundreds of acres that I could be using for it. But I have to move outside of those landfill units to actually, if I want to do any kind of development like that. But yes, good, very good question, solar, yes, is on, on the agenda. And then I have entered into a contract to, to take that landfill gas and then produce power with it, so. It'll probably be coming to you within a couple of years.
Thank you.
It's going to take a long.
I'm impressed, I mean, 14 years ago, I had a guy tell me that they're going to capture all the methane gas off the cow, it's like, this guy's crazy.
It's.
Thanks, change. Any questions for the board? Now, motion to accept these reports. Moved by Chief Mike Nev, second by Chief Mike Fagundes, matter of course, please call roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, appreciate it. Have a good day.
Move on now to item B, probation department. We have Mendy, good morning, how are you today?
If you speak, speak directly. I'll just speak, oh, there he goes, okay.
Got to turn it on here. You've done great.
Thank you, it's my first time. My name is Mendy Bangu, I'm a Division Manager of Rejugal Services for the Out of Custody Youth at the Kings County Probation Department. For fiscal year 2425, the probation department seeks to provide ongoing substance abuse and mental health treatment to the youth in Kings County through Kingsview Mental Health. Kingsview is to provide a full-time onsite therapist with Kingsview is to provide a full-time onsite therapist with Spanish-speaking bilingual assistance. In the event the therapist is monolingual. In addition, they are to provide a part-time bilingual case manager for providing substance abuse treatment. And facilitate life skills training. Lastly, they are to provide a part-time office assistant to coordinate admission documents. And statistical data tracking, which is also available to us as well. Kingsview's partnership is crucial due to their ability to provide dedicated onsite therapy and extend services to rural areas. Ensuring accessibility and consistency in treatment to the youth and their family. Despite efforts to find alternative providers, none match Kingsview's comprehensive service capabilities. In addition, it is our request a contract be retroacted to July first, two thousand and twenty-four due to scheduling conflicts delaying the submission of it. Thank you for your time and I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mandy, any questions or comments? Moved by supervisor Robinson, second by supervisor Fugundis, that important, we call roll.
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fugundis.
Yes.
Very good first time.
Thank you.
Okay, move on now to Public Works Department, I think we got Mitchell, morning Mitchell.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with the Public Works Department. Uh, before your board this morning with the request to approve a construction agreement. Uh, with Granite Construction Company for the Avonel Cut Off Roadway Improvement Phase One project. Uh, if you recall, uh, March twenty-fifth, March fifth of this year, uh, we were before your board requesting uh, the rejection of bids. We had previously put this project out at the end of twenty twenty-three and early twenty-four, uh, with the intent of keeping the roadway open. Uh, using K rels, uh, during construction, uh, bids came in higher than anticipated. Uh, we rejected the bids in March and then in April and May, we re-advertise a project uh, with a full closure. Um, and we would like to just have it noted that by making that change in the plans and specifications for the constructability of the project. We're able to save three point six million dollars. Um, when we first opened bids, they were around eight point six, eight point seven. Um, now the lowest bid is at five point two million dollars. So by allowing the full closure on the Avonel Cut Off during construction, uh, we're able to have that uh, financial savings uh, for the future phases of the project. Uh, the intent is to begin the project if uh, awarded by your board as soon as Caltrans opens up, um, State Route forty-one. Uh, we essentially had this project ready to go, but we wanted to wait due to the impacts on traffic and the motor in public. Um, we've been in contact with Caltrans and they're still aiming for their end of July, first week of August. Uh, completion for their uh, bridge replacement project. So if awarded, we'll work with Granite um, construction uh, to begin the second week of uh, August. Um, there are sixty days for completion. Um, and they are the contractor actually doing the work for Caltrans. Um, so that's also a benefit that that lets us have that um, that line of connection between us, Caltrans and the contractor that. That is awarded the project. And the project limits are the same from State Route one ninety-eight and Avonel Cut Off uh, to four point five miles south, just north of Laurel Avenue. Um, and there will always be detour emergency access. Uh, also, and then we are in contact with City of Avonon and then the Lemoore Naval Air Station. Uh, for potential impacts uh, to their operations. Uh, so the request for your board consideration this morning is the approval of the construction agreement. For five point two million dollars for Granite Construction Company. You have any questions, happy to answer.
And show no, uh, avenues in the house, most anticipated a lot of fight up the road from a part. You know, we couldn't do forty-one and have a set of safe time, so um. What, what's construction time on that project?
For our phase one, we have sixty days. Yes.
And I look like to do a ribbon cutting on August first, right? So she should be starting construction here, second week, obviously, hopefully.
Yes, we're, as soon, i- if this uh, gets awarded by your board today, uh, we'll start scheduling kickoff meetings with Granite and then we'll be ready to go.
Hey, thank you. Any questions or comments for the board? Goodbye supervisor Fugundis, uh, supervisor Fugundis, second, do you have a comment?
I'll, I'll second with the comments chair, thank you. Uh, one, good work and I know we tried to, uh, as you pointed out, to uh. Move this project forward without full closure of the Avonel Cut Off. But uh, let's be careful with the talking points, I don't want it to be promoted that um, to save. X amount of millions of dollars that were closing down the road because even though Avonel wants this, a lot of folks want it and it's long needed. I, I, I just want to keep this project positive because people, people are going to get um. Uh, frustrated and impacted uh, by full closure, especially after coming off the time of dealing with uh, the Highway forty-one and the rerouting it. So I hope the whatever uh, impacts, if we label them as negative impacts in the middle of a project, uh, positive project. Um, that they're not is uh, elevated as it's been with the uh, with the Highway forty-one. Closure to a lot of people who got to commute and get to work uh, every day and so I'm glad uh, uh, Mr. Lopez, the city manager of Avonel's here. Um, I believe the city puts some money in for your part, uh, within the city limits uh, for the improvements as well. So this is going to be a very uh, very positive project, just want to keep it that way. So good work, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. I know. It's not delayed, the forty-one project is delayed because of the, the legislative part of the forty-one project, which is waters of the US. And then it was forced to go to sixteen months for another PRI, PIR review. Uh, so the legislative one that state on the federal government, uh, that was a naffing the waterway. So we had to take consideration that steamships going into that bridge. So this is, this is law that needs to be changed. I just came from Naco in Tampa, Florida. This is in, in the, in the legislative act of the, of the federal government and we try to change that language all the time, so. We got to be diligent and get the new rules, change these old rules to fit our new ways, so.
Hey, we're, we're allowed a steamship, we can put a C in on that.
They got rules for steamship, okay, they're also around PP Park or First Park, so um, no one has open, oh. No one understands, so I know supervisor Fugundis, myself working on that for three days, a couple of years ago. I tried to get the language changed and beat up somebody's project, so thank you.
Thank you.
We have a book in a second, uh, back for a good roll.
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fugundis.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So August, October first, we're all done, right?
Yeah, first phase, sixty days.
Sixty days. Working days.
Yeah, working day.
Oh, baby, that's the government time.
There's a lot of phases too supervisor.
Okay.
Your math's a little off.
Well, maybe twenty twenty-five?
More than we should be done.
Okay, all right. All right, we're going to go now to study session. And is there a timeline on that? Can you do anything? Okay, uh, we're going to study session, uh, Human Services Agency and uh, we have Wendy's.
I'm actually going to have Mark, Mark's going to carry us up.
Mr. Chairman, we actually have a public hearing at ten AM.
Want to?
Need development.
How long will, how long will it take?
Shouldn't take longer than five minutes.
Okay, we got five minutes. Okay, uh, good, Mark, no, we're just working the pub, public hearing first, yeah, sorry about that. I'll figure this out one day. Okay, uh, we got to wait till ten?
Yes, we do, we have three minutes.
Okay, we'll take a five minute re- recess and then. We'll come back at ten.
How's it going to have a?
We're ready to start, we're going to start our public hearing. I think you lost control, Mr. Chair. Yeah, about a five years ago.
Yeah.
All right, so here we go, uh, it is uh. Ten oh three AM and we're ready to go back to business today, so we're going to do a public hearing on the Community Development Agency. Uh, and we have Yessenia. Yessenia.
Good morning.
Yessenia or Yessenian?
Yes and yes. Good morning supervisors and chairman of the board, Yessenia Karuva, planner with the Community Development Agency, here to present the final Community Development Block Grant or CDBG Performance Report. For the two thousand and twenty CDBG grant. Upon completion of a CDBG grant, a public hearing is required to notify the public about accomplishments funded by grant, by the grant. And allow for public comment. The Kings County two thousand and twenty CDBG grant was used for first time home buyer assistance and was scheduled to be closed out on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. The county received a grant award of one million dollars from the Department of Housing and Community Development or HCD. In response to the two thousand and twenty CDBG Notice of Funds Availability or NOFA application that was submitted for home buyer assistance funding. Of the one million dollars, we budgeted nine hundred and twenty thousand to go towards homeownership assistance funds and uh, eighty thousand towards general administration funds. The standard agreement between the county and HCD was executed in April, two thousand and twenty-one and program clearance was received at that time to begin accepting applications and providing services. The home buyer program profi- provided deferred no interest to low income, uh, no interest loans to low income clients and secondary financing for income qualified households in purchasing a home. In all, thirteen participants received home buyer assistance loans during the grant term. Of the one million received, the county was able to expend all but fifty-four thousand, seven hundred, fifty-five dollars and ninety cents. The unspent funds will be disencumbered by the state. Staff recommendations are as follows. Number one, conduct a public hearing regarding the county's two thousand and twenty Community Development Block Grant accomplishments. And number two, authorize the Community Development Agency Director to sign and submit the documents required to close out the grant to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you. Any questions to the board?
I have a question.
Do we ask? Okay, you want to ask a question on that?
I do, so who tracks the progress of the loans?
So the grants administered by the county and self-help.
Okay, so are all the loans performing? Is anybody defaulted?
Not, not, not that we know of.
And if, and if somebody were to, then what happens at that point?
Chuck's going to come in.
Sorry Chuck.
Chuck Kenny, Community Development Agency, uh, so the county Community Development Agency monitors. Approximately around three hundred loans that have been issued over the years. Um, on an annual basis where we uh, send out notifications, we get uh, confirmation of the status of that household. And should a uh, household be in default of their loan? Then uh, the count, the Community Development Agency would begin the process for uh, foreclosure to re. Recoup the county for that loan.
But everything's.
Currently, everything's performing.
Yes.
If, if no more question, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anybody have a written comment?
I have no written correspondence.
Anybody online that has a comment?
No one has their hand raised and I have no speaker parts for this.
Anybody in the audience have questions or comments? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, bring it back to the board for uh, direction.
Move it online, Mr. Chair.
Looked by supervisor Neves, second by supervisor Valley, that important, we call roll.
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fugundis.
Yes.
Item passes, thank you very much. Uh, we will now back up to study session, Human Services Agency and we have Mark Kyris. Morning, Mark, thanks for coming.
Morning, Chair. Before I begin, I just, I know we have a couple of people joining us virtually, if I could just, I see that Serena's got us up and running and. I just want to verify that Laura Fisher with uh, KTHA is available and can hear.
I am here and can hear you, thank you.
Awesome. Well, good morning, Chairman Verboen, members of the board, staff and attendees, my name's Mark Kyris, I'm the Vice Mayor of City of Hanford. And I'm honored here, uh, to be here today as the Chair of the Kings County Homelessness Collaborative. Uh, this is our annual report to the Board of Supervisors, which we will provide today. Um, and I want to start my comments um, with some slides as you'll see as we move along. As you're aware, the Kings County Homeless Collaborative was formed in September tenth, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, with the purpose of advising and assisting the county's efforts to address homelessness issues affecting our community. To better serve the county of Kings, the Kings County Homeless Collaborative meets on the third Monday of each month. Uh, and when those meetings are open to the public and we encourage uh, anyone that has any uh, wishing to be involved or participate in those meetings to attend. Um, or offer public comments available. Some of the collaborative's responsibilities include assisting. Some of the collaborative's responsibilities include assisting the county in assessing the community's homeless population and services, recommending policies to improve quality of life for homeless persons, encourage and support the development and implementation of effective homeless programs and services, aligning those efforts to prevent redundancy. And lastly, develop recommendations for participating agencies relevant to existing and proposed legislation of homelessness. As you'll see on the board here uh on, on your displayed, um, these are some of the members of the uh Kings County Homeless Collaborative. And Serena, if I can go to the next slide, please? So we're here today to provide you with the overview of the collaborative's activities. The collaborative is comprised of key community stakeholders from various entities, including government agencies and departments, elected officials, housing and services providers, and nonprofit organizations, all appointed and approved by your board. As you will see during today, to today's presentation, uh, there are many successes achieved by the collaborative. These successes are directly attributed to dedicated and committed actions of the entire Kings County Homelessness Collaborative Board, which I wish to publicly thank at this time. I would also like to take the opportunity and announce the launch of our new Kings County Homeless Collaborative's website, which can be found at kchc-ca.org. The website serves as a one-stop shop for all information activity related to the collaborative. The goal of the website is to provide timely, transparent updates and communications related to the activity of the collaborative to interested members of the community. Kings County residents are encouraged to visit the website for more information on the efforts to address homelessness in the county. We're proud of the work we've accomplished to date. However, there's still much to be done to address the homelessness issues affecting our community. Addressing an issue of this magnitude takes a coordinated, collaborative effort, and I look forward to continued engagement with our community partners as we deploy solutions, providing services and housing to our most vulnerable population. So at this time, I would like to introduce Laura Fisher. She's the Director of the Kings County Homeless Alliance, and she will be making a presentation to you on the point-in-time count data. Ms. Fisher.
Good morning, everybody. Um, first, thank you so much, Board, for allowing me to join via WebEx. Um, my name is Laura Fisher. I am the Executive Director of Operations for the Kings-Tulare Homeless Alliance, um, which does act as the continuum of care for the bi-county region. That's Kings County and Tulare County. Um, so we are going to talk a little bit about point-in-time numbers um to set the stage for the rest of the presentation. But I want to start off just with a very brief overview of what the point-in-time count is. Um, so a point-in-time count is a HUD-mandated census of people experiencing sheltered and unsheltered homelessness on a single night in January. Um, we do a point-in-time count for a couple of reasons. Um, it is the best method that we have to track local and national trends um because there is a somewhat universal methodology, um, meaning you're able to compare numbers from Kings County to somewhere like Boston because of that universal methodology. Um, and it also allows, allows you to track trends over time locally, which I will show in just a moment. It also helps us assist with local system planning. So it helps us determine how funds should be distributed um both locally and on the state level. So it is taken into consideration um as we determine the distribution of funds um that come into the continuum of care. It's also taken into consideration on the state and federal level um to determine how funds are distributed from there. Um, and then it is necessary to apply for a lot of funding, um HUD funding, funding that's coming down from California Housing and Community Development, California Interagency Council on Homelessness, um along with others. So that was my kind of one-minute overview of what a point-in-time count is. Now I'm going to talk about what it looks like on a local level. Um, so we do a uh bi-county count. So it is Kings and Tulare County counting at the same time. Um, and we did it this year, the week of January 22nd to 29th, with the night in question being January 22nd to 23rd. So we do have seven days to conduct the count. Um, but we ask about one specific night, that night in question of the 22nd to the 23rd, and that's what's giving us that accurate point in time, that one snapshot of the homeless population. And in Kings and Tulare County, we do utilize a survey count as opposed to a um a head count or an extrapolation tool, meaning every person that is counted in our pit count has completed a survey. And that allows us to get not just a number of people who are experiencing homelessness, um, but also allows us to gather that doc um demographic information as well as what their experience has been in homelessness. Uh, if we could move on to the next slide, please. Um, I will report out a couple graphs on what um the point-in-time data showed us this year. So the first graph we have here on the left is looking at the Kings County 10-year trend. Um, so you will see a kind of general upward trajectory of the homeless population. Um, so over the last 10 years, we have seen a 138% increase um in the number of people counted in our pit count. Um, so while that, that is, you know, unfortunately, over a 10-year trend, quite a trajectory upward. Um, I am very happy to report that in the past year, we actually saw a 1.2% decrease in the number of people counted in our pit count. And while 1.2 might not be kind of the substantial decrease that we would like to see, um, compared to some of the other, the other counties in the valley, that is actually, the fact that we decreased in Kings County at all is something to be very proud of. Um, some other counties reported a 37% increase in their pit count numbers. Another local valley county reported a 19.6% increase. So while 1.2 might seem small comparatively, any decrease is going to be a reason to celebrate the hard work um of everybody involved. And actually, just this morning, I received a notification that two-thirds of the state of California's counties have published their point-in-time count. And of those two-thirds, um, it looks like they're, we're looking at a 2% increase for the state of California as a whole. So again, that 2% increase compared to our Kings County 1.2% decrease is really something to celebrate. Um, the next graph here on the right is looking at city distribution of the homeless population. I don't think it comes as any surprise that the majority of our homeless population is residing in the city of Hanford. Um, so we're looking at about 90% of the homeless population residing there, with the remaining 10% distributed across the other cities in the region, with um 4.1% in the city of Lemoore, 3.9 in Porgrin, 1.5 in Avanale, and 0.5 in Armona. And if we could go to the next slide, please? And here is just some of the demographic information that we have available. Um, I will provide additional information in our annual point-in-time report that should be released um by the end of August. Um, but I just pulled out two pieces of information to share with the board today. The first is the graph on the left, which is the place where people who are counted in the point-in-time count slept last night. Um, and there were three categories, um, on the streets, in transitional housing and in emergency shelters. Um, I did want to point out that the streets is somewhat of a misnomer. That can include people staying on the streets, in a um, a park, anywhere like that. It also includes individuals who are sleeping in their car, um, individuals who are sleeping in a garage or another facility that's not meant for human habitation. Um, and then the transitional housing and emergency shelters, those are those facilities um that in Kings County are managed by the Kings Gospel Mission, who has a transitional housing program as well as an emergency shelter, and the domestic violence shelter that is managed by KCao. So um, the majority of our homeless population is sleeping in that location not meant for human habitation. And then the graph on the right is looking at household composition. Um, this is important just to see kind of a, a, a broader overview of individuals who are experiencing homelessness and what their household looks like. Um, so happy to report that Kings County did not have any households counted that were children only. So that would be a household that is made up of only individuals who are under the age of 18. Um, we did have 136 households, uh, or excuse me, 106 individuals um that were in households made up with adults and children, and 276 individuals in adult-only households. So that is um the, the graphs, the general overview of the pit count. Again, we will be releasing um our full annual pit count report um by the end of August, and that is going to have breakdowns by counties. So there will be Kings County data, um, as well as Tulare County data, um, breakdowns of the cities within those counties um with data analysis and additional demographic information. So we wanted to kick off this presentation with the point-in-time numbers um to kind of set the stage for what we are going to talk about next, which is um what the Kings County Homeless Collaborative has been working on, what our goals and accomplishments are, and then what those recommendations moving forward are. And you're going to stick with me for this first slide here on goals. I'm going to present the goal of coordinating and standardizing homeless outreach and deepening structure for coordination of the homeless response system. And here we have listed a couple of the accomplishments um that the county has done um over the last year or so. Um, and, and the point of a kind of this overarching goal is how can we, as a county, come together to better serve our homeless population? So it's really about that ongoing collaboration. Um, and the first thing that we do is through collaborative meetings. Um, so there are two meetings that happen on a regular basis. They happen every month. The first is the Case Management Roundtable Meeting. Um, and in that meeting, there is case conferencing that happens on a monthly basis. So if there are individuals experiencing homelessness um that are working with a, an outreach staff or a service provider, there, and there's issues around that person, they can bring them to that group to discuss best practices, other services available. Case conferencing is a proven method of um positively serving people experiencing homelessness. The other thing that happens at the Case Management Roundtable is ongoing training um for all of those outreach team and service providers. And the second meeting is the one that we have listed here, which is the monthly Kings County Service Coordination Meeting. This is a meeting specifically for Kings County outreach staff to come together and coordinate efforts. Um, they're working on establishing a coordinated outreach calendar to know who's going out, when, and where in order to best serve our homeless populations, make sure we're hitting the entire geographic region. As I mentioned in the pit report, um, we do have people that are spread out, experiencing homelessness in the entire county. So in this meeting, they're able to kind of say, okay, Champions Outreach Team is going to go to Avanale on this day. Kingsview Outreach Team is going to be in Hanford on this day. Make sure that they're hitting the entire geographic region um without duplicating efforts. And the other um thing that happens in those meetings, again, is that ongoing training. So everyone doing outreach is getting that same base knowledge to be able to best serve um people experiencing homelessness in Kings County. The other thing that happens um about coordinating and standardizing homeless outreach is local initiative navigation center events. Those are drop-in events that happen on a regular basis in Hanford and Porgrin to allow for people experiencing homelessness to come to one centralized location and experience services provided by a number of service providers, meaning they can meet with county workers um and get assistance with SSI or SSDI food stamps. Then they can go one table over and get housing counseling. Then they can go one table over um and maybe get their blood pressure tested. So they're able to receive multiple services in a centralized location. Champions Recovery um was awarded just over $900,000 of HAB4 and HAB5 to establish and expand their street outreach program. The exciting thing about that is they're partnering the street outreach with rental assistance. So a real pathway to permanent housing. Outreach teams have the funding to go out, provide services, get individuals' document ready, and then facilitate and get them into a unit and provide that rental assistance as well. Um, and then the final thing I wanted to touch on was that integration of CALAME services. Um, CALAME is kind of the hot issue right now in the state of California, um specifically regarding the homeless, homelessness efforts. Um, and we have successfully been working towards integrating CALAME resources into our homeless response system. Instead of having two separate um response systems, one through CALAME and one through our Coordinated Entry System, we're having a unified approach to addressing homelessness. Um, and then the work in progress that we have identified is working on integrating um street outreach and the knowledge of people experiencing homelessness to the general public. So if there is a question, if there's information that the, the general public would like to know um about people experiencing homelessness, we're working on creating um a flow of information from the homeless population to the general public utilizing the Community Solutions Work Group, which is a subgroup of the collaborative. So that is our first goal, and I believe I'm going to pass it off to Wendy to talk about the next goal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. Wendy Osikoff, Director of Human Services Agency. I'm going to go over a couple um additional goals that the collaborative has identified. Um, the next one is really about, um, as Laura mentioned, our, our public outreach and creating some awareness around this issue. Uh, we know our community has concerns, and um, and getting them information is important. The, the collaborative, I think, over the past, you know, five years of its existence, and you know, we launched that and then COVID hit. And so certainly, the first couple of years were a struggle. I think what we've really accomplished is good internal communication. We have all the partners there. We're aware of what each other's doing. We know how to leverage, um, communicate, refer to each other, um, and just partner around this issue. What we've not um done as well is the outward communication to the public. And so we did spend some time this year focusing on some just basic infrastructure things that will put us in a better position to do that. And so um some of these things seem little, but um it, it helps us form some cohesiveness and unity. And so we, we developed a logo. We have our own website now. It was, um, we had a website, but it was sort of buried in the county's website, very difficult to find. And there'll be a press release going out later today to announce that to the public. Um, we spent some time updating our bylaws, developing a, a formal media policy. Um, and then we really re-looked at our committee structure. We had some committees that were not, had kind of outgrown their purpose as um programs were beginning to be implemented. And we had some um new committees that we needed to establish and, and resource and get um uh identify different members that maybe weren't, weren't present, that were critical um to the makeup of those committees. So um, we just wanted to take a moment to kind of highlight those efforts and, and as Mark mentioned, announce the launch of the, of the new website. Next slide, please. This goal is really focused on um expanding the permanent availability of permanent, affordable, and supportive housing in our community. And Dr. Lewis and I are going to highlight a couple, um, a couple of those targeted efforts. But before launching into that, um, I, I think, and Dr. Lewis is going to reiterate some of this, it is really a whole continuum. It isn't just having permanent housing. Um, you know, there've been efforts, and you're going to hear more about that today. We need a shelter. Sometimes people just need short-term emergency housing so that they can transition and, and get to somewhere safe and stable. Um, there's um a variety of strategies that we need to put in place. And while these projects have been, um, have been in the works for several years, and, and, and we're not, you know, we, we are not feeling the impact of them because we have not been able to move people in yet, we have been successfully serving people. That small drop, I think the drop is four people, four individuals um in, in the pit count is significant. My agency alone has served in the past fiscal year um in supporting over 259 people to get permanent housing. Um, what you can't see is also the prevention. We have, through some of the grants and funding that we receive through our programs, we don't have a housing program, but our foster care program, our CalWorks program, has housing components to it. Um, we've, we've prevented 59 additional individuals from becoming homeless. And that may be that we provided some rental assistance. That may be, we've got a lot of individuals um that we come into contact through our Adult Protective Service Program. For example, they're older, they're on fixed income. They might just be getting their social security or, you know, a small pension. And then their electricity bills go crazy during the summer, and they're making a choice between paying electricity. And they're making a choice between paying electricity and paying the rent. And so if we can come in with one-time assistance to avoid them getting evicted and avoid them being. Added to the individuals on the street, we've been able to do that. It is hard to see those preventative efforts, and sometimes it's who we're most effective with frequently are the newly homeless. And so I think, you know, the, the perception of, you know, dropping four, well, I, I know for us, we, we impacted well over two hundred and fifty families. Um, actually, if you include the prevention over three hundred, and that's just my agency, and there's many agencies doing a part. So wanted to sort of give that context because that's work that's happening, it's not highlighted as new work, but it's work that's happening every day in our community. Um, I'm going to focus uh, quickly on um, our two uh, housing, permanent supportive housing projects. There's always interest on where we are with them, and Serena is going to share a few photos that we have, the first one is um. So I hope Sunrise is the first one, right Serena, yes. So um, Sunrise is going to, um, is the conversion of the Stardust Hotel to the Sunrise Apartments. There'll be twenty-two studio apartments, that project is effectively complete. Um, there's a little bit of landscaping, a little bit of part work on the parking lot to be completed. Um, Serena, you can click through the next couple of slides. Um, this, these are a couple of external slots, you can see there's a little landscaping needed. The exterior's been painted, everything's been touched up, on the interior. You know, we've got beds, we've got the appliances in, um. And, and then there, there's the restroom. Um, what is pending for this project is related to the switchgear, which will electrify the units and. That was expected in April, and then it was expected in May, and it is now expected in August, and we certainly hope it arrives in August because we are ready. Um, you know, to open this, open this project up and get people moved in. Unfortunately, that switchgear is just something that is in hot, high demand and. Uh, facing significant supply chain issues, but other than that, that project really is um, virtually complete. It is um, well ahead, we set a goal of December twenty twenty-five for its completion. And so even though it feels like we're, we're delaying it month by month. Um, we're still ahead of the ultimate timeline for the Sunrise Project. Um, I think the next slide should shift us into Triangle. Yes, so um, Triangle Courtyard is the other permanent um, supportive housing uh, project, it is um. Not ahead of schedule, in fact, it's significantly behind schedule, this is um. Uh, originally it was set up to have twenty-four um, units that would serve two individuals each, they're two-bedroom units that would ultimately serve forty-eight. Uh, we have twenty units on site. I am, we, we, you can see there's been some skirting and some progress made on the individual units. Our focus over the past um, couple of months has been to get the ADA units on site. We don't have the ADA units um, on site, we can't. Get occupancy to the ten, you know, any of the other units that were already there. And so what you're looking at now is the first ADA unit that's been delivered, it is on its foundation. The two halves have been buttoned together, I think you can click, I think there's another shot from another angle. And then um, we've got some internal pictures to give you a sense of the, what the ADA unit looks like. Um, that's kind of the, the kitchen dining living area, it's all open, those are the two-bedroom, it's still a two-bedroom unit off to the left. Next slide. Um, the bathroom, that's open, it's ADA accessible, um, so you can, you know, uh, you could roll right into the, the shower area. Um, will you go back Serena, I wanted to point out in the kitchen. I think you can see from the angle. Um, you'll see there's no lower cabin, cabinetry that all allow, also allows for someone that's in a wheelchair to be able to pull up and do work at the counter. Um, the upper cabinets are lowered, so they're more accessible, so. Um, one unit is on site right now, the next unit is expected to arrive the first week of August. We are pushing for um, completion the end of August, I think when I was last in here, we, we were pushing for end of July, end of July is not going to happen. We are pushing for end of August. Um, and we are working very closely and monitoring, we're out there two, three days a week checking on progress and working with the developer. Um, next, is that, click through, is that the last picture, maybe one more? There we go, thank you. Um. I think that, I think that's it on my project, so I'll hand it over to Dr. Lewis.
Thanks so much Wendy, Lisa Lewis, Kings County Behavioral Health. Um, I won't bury the lead, what we're working up to is to give you the total of the new units coming online in next fiscal year. Twenty-four, twenty-five, and the total new units are hundred and sixty-five. So I'm going to continue to give you the uh, breakdown of that, but before I do, I want to also speak to the continuum. Um, the continuum of housing is something that starts at prevention. So it starts at like rental assistance, when somebody's at risk of losing their housing. It moves on then to street outreach, to those who are out on the streets and we, we're seeing them. Additionally, the next level really is an emergency low barrier shelter, something we're hearing a lot about and working toward. The next level is bridge housing and rapid rehousing. And this is a time when people are getting their documents together, getting to the place where they can move into permanent and supportive housing. The next is the transitional and permanent supportive housing, and then affordable housing. Which is housing that, you know, anybody can apply for as long as they can meet the criteria um, with their um, their income. Um, so about, throughout this presentation, you're hearing about these various supports within the county. The increase in the array of services and supports more effectively is meeting the needs of the homeless. Wendy spoke to the additional sixty-six permanent supportive housing units. Being brought online through um, Sunrise and Triangle uh, Courts. And there's an additional twenty-two units of permanent supportive housing. And fifty units of affordable housing through North Star Courts coming uh, this fiscal year. And twenty-seven units of bridge housing through the Holiday Lodge coming online um, in the next year. In total, as I said, this is a hundred and sixty-five new units of housing for the county in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And as um, Wendy mentioned, these are new on top of the uh, housing efforts that are being made by each of our departments. So in Behavioral Health, we went through and added it up, and our number is at two hundred and forty-seven. Adults and families have received housing support through Kings County Behavioral Health in the last year. So that's housing that we're doing through our ACT team, through Adult FSP, through the Crisis Team, through all the different services that we have. Which provide housing for people, so together, it's about five hundred people in the last year through our, just our two departments. That are currently being housed through our programs, and then we're adding the hundred and sixty-five. So additionally, we can go on to the next slide, um, slide ten. So as part of the community engagement goals of the collaborative, um, in addition to the Public Information Work Group, which worked on uh, creating the website. There's also a Public Solutions Work Group, which was formed last summer. And the goal of the work group is to reach out to those who are experiencing homelessness, and also to reach out to the community. Um, we want to garner input on solutions in addressing homelessness specifically, what the community is, wants to tell us, what they're saying. We don't want to have to um, have these experiences where they're coming forward after something has been developed, we want to go to them before and ask. More questions about how can you contribute to um, all the changes we're making, what are your opinions? And additionally, wanted to go to those who are homeless because. There's an idea that we shouldn't do something about people without them, they should be included in the narrative, and we were able to accomplish this. Um, this year during the pit count, we were able to interview two hundred and nineteen homeless individuals and garner their um, responses about. Um, what would help them be most engaged in housing. Um, and um, the different types of services and housing that would be helpful to them, and what factors. Um, would reduce their barriers to becoming housed, and we get, we garnered a lot of really important information, we've been sharing at various presentations. Um, additionally, in order to do the community survey, we're going to do an online survey and an interactive, a public interaction process, so we're going to invite the public. Into a well-organized um, interactive survey process. Okay, I think my next thing is to turn it over to Jeff.
Jeff. Thank you, Dr. Lewis, uh, Jeff Garner, Executive Director of KC AO and Vice Chair of the Kings County Homeless Collaborative. And thank you Chairman and Board Supervisors and Staff and Public. For this opportunity to share the progress that we have made as part of this annual report. I'm going to be talking about goal, uh, the goal to establish a low barrier shelter or navigation center. Um, I had the privilege of being before you a, a few weeks ago, or maybe a month ago now. Um, and soliciting your support, which you did come through. Um, as we are talking about a new food bank and service center here in Kings County. Um, before getting into that project, I do want to talk about the current shelter that we operate, I do feel like. A lot of times a shelter that we've been operating since nineteen eighty-three. Does get a little bit overlooked, I think there's some reasons for that, but uh, it is a confidential location. Uh, the name of the shelter is the Barber Seville Shelter. And it is a domestic violence shelter that is meant to be confidential because we still have. Those victims who are trying to live in safety and security, and so we don't disclose the, the location of that property. Uh, but the property and the program last year uh, provided service to a hundred and ten individuals. These are women, men, children, uh, but we also open up beds uh, to the general homeless population. Uh, females um, and children um, who aren't big sons of domestic violence. But if we do have beds available, we do make room um, uh, for them. Individuals at the shelter can stay there anywhere between a day, up to ninety days, sometimes we even extend it longer. Um, every individual that come to, comes to the shelter is linked to a case plan, and our goal is to. Rebuild that foundation that caused them um, to enter into our shelter. Build up uh, that foundation and get them onto a road of security and self-sufficiency. Uh, we also have been working on, as I mentioned uh, earlier about building a new shelter here in Kings County. Uh, we purchased the property uh, last year, uh, we had some uh, grant money from the state. That we, we used to, to buy the property, KC AO has made a general fund investment to the property. But we've also received investments from the County Board of Supervisors, uh, from uh, the state of California, the federal government. As well as the city of Hanford. And that progress is still on schedule to break ground in two thousand and twenty-five. And to be completed in two thousand and twenty-six. We probably will have a switchgear issue as well, but. Yes, our fingers will be crossed, and hopefully we can get that taken care of. Um, but we've received good support from the city as well as the county. To move forward on that project, and that's just phase one of the project, which is the dormitories for the men and women. Part of the navigation center, which would include shower services, laundry services. Uh, so that will be phase one, phase two will be building out the centralized kitchen. More of the navigation center, and then phase three would be constructing a forty thousand square foot uh, food bank warehouse. Uh, so we have that um, happening now, which we are excited about. But we are also keeping one eye on the idea of, you know, we're talking two years to have this shelter up and running. So what are we going to do in those, in that two-year period? So we are looking at options as what we can do. Um, there are some uh, kind of prefabricated buildings that we're starting to look at. Uh, to see if, if one, we have the funding to do it, but then two, the timeline in terms of getting that up and running. Uh, so we are looking at some possibilities we have developed as part of the collaborative, a subcommittee. Uh, to help with that project as well, because uh, two thousand and twenty-six can't come fast enough. But we definitely need to do something in between um, for our homeless population. Uh, next slide please. So I'm going to ask Dr. Lewis to come back up too and, and support uh, this uh, this discussion, but these are the recommendations. That the collaborative have identified, that we want to share with the Board of Supervisors. Um, there's a kind of a long list here, but. A few things I want to highlight on, and then I'll let Dr. Lewis uh, highlight on some others. Is we want to continue to focus on creating a temporary sleep and navigation center. Uh, as we know, that is part of the continuum of services that individuals need. Who are facing a, a housing crisis, who are facing uh, homelessness, so we want to keep that um, in our, in our focus. But we also want to continue to seek out funding um, for shelter services and particularly our low barrier shelter that KC AO. Is trying to build, because it's not only the construction phase of, of the project, but we also need operating dollars. Uh, once that center is up and running. And so those are a few items that I wanted to, to touch upon, and I'll let Dr. Lewis touch upon some of the other items there, thank you.
Thanks Jeff, so one of the thoughts we had is that over the last uh, five years or so. As we've each been working on developing our own programs, for instance, we've been building a mental health system, right? And part of that mental health system has include housing. And various program, various departments have been working on housing projects and various programs. Um, but we've been coming together, getting to know each other, getting to understand what we are all doing in the collaborative, which has been really helpful and great. But we don't have a coordinated overall leader um, or uh, a position in the county that would be in charge of. Um, working on the homelessness project, so. I was talking about it the other day, and I said, it's almost like we're all our individual trades and we need a general contractor. We need somebody to come and organize, you know, where are the priorities? We're all looking at this various funding, wait a minute, this person is actually, this program is actually going after that funding, this would be the better choice, we should put it over here. We need to organize and prioritize, so that's one of the recommendations, is to hire a dedicated homeless collaborator, coordinator, sorry, um, to work with us. One of the things we've established over the last five years is really good working relationship between these departments. And um, organizations in the community, so. I kind of joked that, you know, in, in some situations, having someone like this coming in might be like herding cats, but it's not going to be. Because we're already working collaboratively together, and we're all working in the same direction, so. Although it would probably be a very highly political position and very challenging. Um, that person would have a lot of support um, from department heads and various um. Community agencies who really are asking for something like this to help coordinate us all and set priorities. Um, anything else Jeff? Uh, the other thing is, we're really focused on making sure that we can get. The results and the information out to the community, both in terms of hard numbers, so they understand where we are and where we're going. But also visually, I was uh, sharing with the continuum that when I was in San Francisco, both in October. And then December of last year, I saw the difference in what had happened. As they were starting to send social services teams out to the community, in October, it was absolutely horrific, it was the worst I've ever seen in San Francisco. In December, my husband and I, I wasn't even thinking about this part of it, my husband and I kept saying, what's different, everything's different. You know, the streets look different, and as we were paying attention, we started to see these small social service teams out. Um, wearing khakis or jeans and these kind of light yellow shirts. They were usually in groups of three, um, and they were working with people who were homeless, I think I saw about ten of these teams over the course of three or four days. And um, uh, law enforcement was not usually involved, it was usually a long-term conversation with the person where they are. And they were working on getting them services and getting them off the street. A couple of times I did see law enforcement, but they were kind of off over to the side. It didn't look like they were necessarily needing to engage, but for whatever reason, they were there. Um, I was, I really admired it, I thought it was a great idea. And even when we have desperate groups of, separate groups of outreach uh, programs that are from different um. Organizations that we're funding, we've had some conversation and want to have more conversation. Um, at the Alliance about finding a way to bring them all together so that at least visually and for the community. Not only do they have a coordinated calendar of where they're going to go, but they look alike. You know, that they all have the same shorts or something, so the community can say, oh yeah, there's the outreach teams that are working from Kings County. So people can start to visually see, and also know who to call. You know, what, what one number are we going to use for the community to call, and then for that information to be. Sent to the right organization or the right outreach team who has the right connections to get somebody connected. So these are the kind of things Zach had to stop us yesterday, because in the conversation, we ended up kind of going into a working group. And we have to agendize these things and work on them properly, and we are going to do that. But um, those are kind of the next steps of where we are right now, looking forward to it, and really look forward to your input and leadership on what we could do going forward to help. Uh, both prioritize and lead, thank you.
Thank you. That it?
So Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, I'll just kind of wrap it up, um, and ta, and we'll gladly answer any questions if you have. As you can see, the collaborative is, is diligently been working in the last number of years. Um, to resolve this issue, and I, I couldn't be more proud of the men and women and the professionals that are involved in this collaborative, it truly is. Um, a group of people that have taken the time to get to know each other. Taken the time to understand the problems in the community and work actively to solve those solutions, so. Um, I'm proud to be part of the organization, um, I'm, I'm very humbled to be the chair. Um, and I, and I continue to uh, look forward and the progress that we'll make as anything goes forward, so. I'll open myself up or uh, any members here, any questions you may have?
Thank you, thank you Mark for stepping up to be in the chair and bringing this to us, appreciate it. Uh, the board have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. But Rob.
First of all, thank you for all of your efforts collectively. Uh, I know a lot of you, Wendy, you, you worked tirelessly on this, and thank you, Jeff, you worked, you know. Many, many hours on it. Uh, for starters, I had heard that the city beyond the one million dollars. Uh, had also dedicated other, other funds for this, is that accurate?
So what the city of Hanford has done is, is uh, as part of our uh, community uh, block grant. Um, can we, CBDG, I gotta get it, always get it wrong when I kind of go through it. Uh, we've committed uh, two hundred thousand a year for the next five years. Um, to the uh, low barrier shelter um, with KC AO to get that uh, up and going. We had some additional funding left at the end of last year that we've also moved over now and approved to be utilized for that project. So we're up to one point two million. The next thing that's on the horizon for us, of course, if you may have heard, is the city of Hanford is looking at a revenue measure on the November ballot. It's a public safety resident revenue measure to address our our needs with public safety. But that also includes roads, dealing with homelessness and things of that nature. As we all know, there there's the the money is is the thing when we start talking about gift to public funds. We start talking about how how those taxpayer dollars can be used to fund different projects. So there there's a lot of, you know, criteria established and built in place and how that can be done. But with this revenue measure, and we hope that the community will get back and support that, that there is some funding available to address a more robust, I guess, if you will, effort to to assist in keeping the move. Because as Mr. Gardner said, it's not just getting the facility built, it's going to be to fund it annually. How does how does it operate on an annual basis? So as an elected, I'm going to spend the next, probably the remainder of the year trying to get out, meet with all the different city councils, do some presentations, talk to them. I mean, this is a collaborative effort. It's not just the city of Hanford. It's got to be all of our community members and partners and and different electeds in the other cities to understand the importance of what we're dealing with as an entire community and how we can best serve them.
Also, just a shout out to the heart team, Officer Cabrillo. You know, I I have interaction with him. And in addition to the work that he does with the homeless, really what, well, according to Chief Huddleston, is they're trying to reconnect several of the homeless with their families. And I see, I think that's another component that's that's been helpful in all of this. And so I'm grateful it's, you know, this is a multifaceted problem. We've discussed before the impact it has on the on the businesses and so forth. Something I'm not sure if folks are aware of or not, when when the debris goes on public lands, yes, the city will, if it's within the city limits, the city will will take care of it. But but only after it's been deserted for forty eight to seventy two hours. If it's disturbed, the timeline stands again. So a lot of times the debris will just, it it will sit or it will sit close by and just kind of shift. On private lands, they'll come by and they'll they'll pick up four or five items. But the rest, the property owner is responsible for, to to pay for to 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 get rid of it. Have there been any discussions in terms of the new Supreme Court decision regarding the homeless?
Well, I think the the recent Supreme Court decision is is, you know, everybody's in scramble mode right now. We're all trying to figure out what it means. As you know, the city of Hanford has adopted a new camping ordinance. We've worked with the with your board as well to make sure that our ordinances are at least compliant and in the same realm as as yourselves. And so, you know, of course, with the recent decision, you know, you know, there's attorneys, you know, coming in and and everything else. When what we're talking about on Supreme Court is, of course, for the public is the Martin versus Boise decision and the Grants Pass, Oregon decision that the Supreme Court just made overturning that. So there there's a lot of work to be done as far as how it's going to be interpreted. One thing I want to add, and I think you bring up a great point, is the city of Hanford, and and that's who I'm here, you know, now speaking on behalf of, we're not looking to criminalize homelessness, of course. We we understand it homelessness is not a crime. We we have a need out there. We have, we have individuals that are being impacted every single day by it. And we're not, we're not looking to criminalize it. We're doing our best to protect the the community as well as best we can. When you start talking about refugee issues and things like that, those are health and safety issues that we have to take into consideration. But collaboratively, working together with these professionals, and that's what I'm going to call them, as as the collaborative, we're we're trying to address these issues. And it's it's just takes time. We all know nothing moves fast, but but the progress is being made and I couldn't be prouder.
This is just a question for council. Council, I believe we're working on our tent ordinance?
We are working on that ordinance. In fact, we have a draft ordinance together. The direction that council previously received was to draft an ordinance that that copied the language in the city of Hanford. We have a draft ordinance copying that language. It's currently with administration to reach out to see if there's policy considerations that we want to implement that are unique to Kings County to amend the ordinance from its existing draft.
And then lastly, for me, Jeff, it just seemed like the number of beds went down to one fifty. Is that accurate?
Well, we have a capacity of two hundred. When we opened phase one, if we need two hundred beds, we'll get two hundred beds. We do need a little bit of space for like a cafeteria because that won't be built until phase two. So we will be able to be flexible based on the demand of the community. So if we need to be at one fifty, we'll we'll be if we need to be at two hundred. We are using like bunk beds. We are going to maximize the space as best that we can. And we have overflow property too, to where, I mean, if we need to expand beyond that, that could be even something we consider.
Herculean effort. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. First of all, I want to commend you as a fellow elected official. I have respect for you making this a priority, and you do speak passionately on the on the issue. And I like your approach to the subject of homelessness. So and commend you for a good support from your board for funding the commitment over the years. So that's the way you make the impacts, right? Instead of year to year. So that's that's good for you. Just however, on some of these recommendations here, at least half of the recommendations that were on the slide all come the dollar signs to them. And so I know you guys are, as mentioned, you guys are just kind of kicking things around right now and are still going to agendize some of these recommendations and dig into them to the layers. But please, maybe next time, just come with some some breakdown of these bullet points on proposed funding ideas. Because, you know, and then just speaking for me to see in the first bullet point of hiring a dedicated homeless coordinator. And I saw that there when you said that, man, you looked directly at our C A O on that. And that's kind of like, hey, get ready to open the purse strings for that. And that's that, to me, that's that's a big, that's a big ask right now. And again, just speaking for me, but for I'm more of what to use the the services that we have and and the things, the great things, the good things that we do have around the county. Let's dig in more on that. Because it's hard for me to sit here and 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 just look at an ass like that right now fiscally. I'd say that I'm not here to support that. I'm just saying from the fiscal challenges that we face from our employees, everything that we heard during unscheduled appearances and union negotiations in closed session over the years. You know, the need for a water specialist, which, you know, I would prioritize that prior to a homeless coordinator. You know, we're talking about the need to open up a new position here at the county and and impact our budget. I I just off the top of the head, I go with the water issue right now for overall. But so so that's the point. Good work, not being negative. I appreciate all you guys' time, but just come with 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 some ideas on that. Whether, you know, you're researching, there's some federal money to keep a homeless coordinator on board or state money. But county dollars right now, that's that's a big ask right now. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Supervisor, so Lisa Lewis, Kings County, Miami. Yeah, behavioral health. Sorry, that was kind of involuntary, but like to curate. Actually, I, yeah, I'm talking about a county physician. So, yes, actually, we've been talking about that from the very beginning. And both human services, I know Wendy will speak for herself, but from behavioral health, we would like to contribute funds toward the salary of that position. So we consider it so important and so helpful in the overall effect of meeting human services needs in the county that we will prioritize that as a budgetary.
And I appreciate that because if you would have said that, or that would have been
I should have.
That have been easier to take the impact of all there, but thank you.
And just to add a little bit, Wendy Osikoff, a human services director. So yes, I I think we've got through some of the funding that that we receive, we would be able to pull out some money and and put it towards a portion of that, a homeless coordinator. All of the other recommendations, all of the work happening, it can happen without someone leading it. It is happening. It's slower. We're not as effective at communicating. It's a little clunkier. We trip over each other sometimes. So for us to be our most effective, it would be good to have someone like the general contractor concept to kind of just help bring all of us together in a more meaningful way, help with that external communication and help us with a broader strategic plan. There is, you know, with the governor's budget, I we were exploring this earlier, and I was even like, oh, I don't know. They're looking at cutting some of my funding. They've 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 restored all of the funding for for my program. So I feel better about being able to obligate some money. And they've affirmed both half five and half six going forward, which is also potentially a resource that we could use to fund some of these things. So we, if we came back, we would come back with, you know, how it would be funded and what the impact is certainly.
Perfect. Thank you. And last thing, Ms. Chair, on the on the some of the charts on the point and time counts and the data that you put, I'm sure you guys probably were, but can you make sure Home Garden is getting a quick look at as well? I see our Mona was listed and that and that's good. But if you haven't heard, folks here in the room have been very helpful on Home Garden. There's seems to be an issue of people just pulling up with RVs and and just pulling over on the side and getting on land and and just setting up shop. And so there's been some negative impacts to that. And and so just with with exists existing personnel, you know, the sheriff's department has been very helpful. Our public works director and his department have been helpful on the 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 impacts go beyond just the homeless person, like as you talked about. You know, just by having a population in Home Garden now. And and they're setting up across the street from the Home Garden Community Park. Now we have, we have, we're dealing with an issue now that's impacting the children, meaning someone went over and either vandalized or stole the copper wire from the electrical panel. So now the water splash pad isn't working. And so I'm getting calls on, you know, the kids can't go cool down there during the last heat wave and go play at the park and a lot of pride went into that park. And that's something that the kids look forward to. But now, you know, you can't even run the water splash pad. So just kind of keep in mind on there, we're having an issue on there too.
Yeah, and and it it's a challenge, right? We we all know, I mean, we, as as things go, you know, it's a city, we, you know, when we're dealing with encampments and things like that, as as we get complaints and and go out and try to handle those, it it basically displaces individuals, correct? And from where they were, it displaces them, and they end up looking for another area to go to. And and it's a challenge, no doubt. I I'm committed and I will offer my availability to you or any members of the board. If you'd like to meet, I would gladly do that. Love to hear the concerns of your district districts. I think it's critical. You know, as a as a collaborative, you know, this this is the entire county. And I think it's critical that we all get on the, you know, kind of have the same information and move forward to do the best we can do. Thank you.
Can I add a brief comment on that as well? This is Laura Fisher, Executive Director of the Kings Tillery Homeless Alliance. We can, we will send out outreach staff. We'll make sure that they know that that there is kind of an encampment forming in that area. It's possible that they weren't there the night of the point in time count, which is why they aren't reflected on these charts. But we we can absolutely have some of our outreach teams, either the alliance's outreach teams or one of the others that work in Kings County head out that direction. And and also more than happy to to join Mark in any meetings to talk about what can be done, what's going on in your jurisdictions and how we can can work to to better address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And in all fairness to that, I barely became aware of it, I think about three weeks ago, when we had some folks from Home Garden show up. So but the problem was out there for a while, but they were trying to deal with it themselves. And then they finally brought it to our attention here at the board a few weeks ago with that unscheduled appearances. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Any other questions if I have any? I do have a question, Mr. Laura. On the point in time continued, you have some some criteria which you asked, which is, you know, if they're on the street, if they have children or they are just children, traditional housing, emergency shelter, without children, with children. Can you ask the homeless if they have jobs? Or are they employable? Are they, are they employable?
That's a great question. We do ask income. So if they have income and if they do have income, where that income is coming from. So that is included in the in the survey that point in time participants complete.
And then do you ask if they're under the care of health and human services or behavioral health at that same time too?
Not at the same time. The reason for that is the point in time count is it's a fine balance of getting the information we want without having the survey be so insum and long that they don't want to participate in it. So the the purpose of the point in time count isn't to connect people to resources necessarily. It's to get the data. I mean, we, of course, are saying here's business cards, here's, you know, we're doing that in the process. But there is, there's a limit to the amount of information that we can gather in, you know, a a five minute interview with individuals, especially when, you know, we really only have those seven days to conduct surveys with every person experiencing homelessness in the Bay County region. There are outreach teams going out on a regular basis that are saying, you know, are you connected to H S A? Are you connected to Champions Recovery? Are you connected to Kingsview, K C A O, and the other outreach teams? So that is happening on a a daily basis. The outreach teams are going out. Point in time count, we're not having that level of granular conversation. It's more asking the general information about their experiences.
Okay, and I ask this because that's the next question. You know, the public watching this right now, and we're getting blamed for, you know, having homeless, not helping homeless, too much, too much help for the homeless. And, you know, a couple of years ago, we we supported H S A with Port Housing, right? And we did, it was a North Star upholding project. And, you know, we we supported a pass through with some money, I think it was five hundred or seven hundred thousand dollars, and which allowed that project to go forward. And, you know, we were threatened in public by their our constituents about, you know, how dare you, you know, you're wasting taxpayer dollars. So out of that four hundred and twelve people that you counted, how many of those people are going to be eligible to live in these apartments or homes that we're creating from? So we have one hundred sixty five units going in now. Out of the four hundred and twelve, how many of those will qualify? Because I know there are some rules to qualify for these these housing developments, right? You you can't be on on drugs. You can't have some, some, you can't have a criminal record. There's certain qualifications. I know there's a bigger population out there other than the four hundred and twelve that are borderline homeless. We just heard from our staff this morning, they're having a hard time. They're working full six, five days a week, and they are having a hard time affording a house. So there is a bigger number to this picture, and it's more to it than just the person speaking on the street. You know, we want the, we identify homeless with a person on the street, but there's more to it than that. Will I elaborate that, Dr.?
Absolutely, yeah. Supervisor Verbin, just to go back to your first question. So we did a supplemental questionnaire this year, and that's what I was referring to. So two hundred and nineteen people then answered the additional questions that we asked them. We'd be happy to present that to you if you'd like to see it. But yes, when we asked them, what what would they like to help them, you know, get out of homelessness? Many were employed, but what that a job employment was one of the top things that people asked for. It was a really interesting survey. We'd be happy to bring it to you. And in the numbers that Laura has, you can tell that some do have jobs, but the their income is extremely low or they have social security and also that's extremely low. But those numbers are really enlightening and we'd be happy to present. And yes, as far as the continuum of care that I was describing to you, there's different requirements to meet each of those levels of housing, right? But as we get into being aware that there's people sort of, you know, who have jobs, you simply cannot afford affordable housing at the at the far end, which is what North North Star is, is one of the most important things we need to add to our continuum right now. So that's housing where you pay rent based on your income, right? So that you can afford it, and that's really crucial, and so we hope. I I don't know the details on that one, so that's some, if you know that, then that's new to me. But those are So that's some, if you know that, then that's new to me, but, uh, those are things we need to add to the.
Yeah. I just try to, you know, probably transparent to the community because, you know, some people pick and hear what they want to hear and react on that. We want to make sure they have all the information out there to them, uh, because, you know, I identify as a homeless person as a one sleeping on the street by Sizzler that was there for a long time. But there's more to it than.
Right. There are a lot of people couch surfing with family members and occasionally in their car. Yeah, it's a really serious situation. And as we've done, um, the behavioral health assessments for the twenty-two people from the no place like home, the stories I've heard have been heartbreaking. And, um, these are people who really, really need housing and have done everything they can to get it, you know? So it's.
Then some of the people that need housing, have housing and they're just trying to fight to survive. And we heard today, example, what's about Valley Valley. You know, I'm working five days a week and I'm going to have to take on a second job just so I can have a house. I can pay my power, that's power bill has gone out of control, food prices have gone out of control. Uh, you know, rent can only go up so much, but, you know, insurance is hard to get, hard to afford. Uh, we're all struggling here. So, you know, the, the community that pays taxes and works hard all day and votes for us are the ones saying, hey, you need to start helping us first. So we've got to make sure we're transparently explaining that. Hey, we only help the ones that want to be helped and that can be helped, just like you. And if you fall by, we can put ourselves out there for you too as well. So I want to make that point out.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chair, as you know, it's a multifaceted, um, you know, condition, right? I mean, and, and it's challenging. I mean, for, you know, we start talking about affordable housing, we start talking about all those things that are, are impactful on this. Um, and, you know, I, I kind of use the analogy down to when I talk to people and they're like, well, what do you think? And I'm like, you know, there's a lot of people out there that are one bad day to, one bad day away. I mean, some tragic event in their life, um, that will change their, you know, their, their living and, and their ability to live and, and where to live and all the, and so, um, as, as the collaborative, we, we, we're cognizant of that. We're trying to, you know, always stay on top of that. And so that's where that out, street outreach is important. Um, and we have those, um, partners that are out there making contact with these people, trying to find out what their needs are, what, you know, what's the current trend and, and, and it's, it's going to move. It's going to happen flow and, and we'll adjust to that as we go. But, um, I think, I think we've got the basis set. We're trying to get, you know, everything to move forward appropriately and, and, you know, North Star, I get it. Uh, we know it was, it was a challenging topic, but, um, at the end of the day, yeah. Yeah. Just a lot of misinformation out there on that as well, as you know. Yeah.
I shouldn't have to upset my life, my pride and my anger, but it's, it's all this weekend. How tragic it can be because someone has misinformation.
Yep. So, yeah.
It's important to get divided based out there all the time, even though we have four hundred and twelve people out there today. Uh, there may be a bigger, bigger group out there that need help.
Absolutely.
My friend of mine, when he died, I sold his hard board, worked on the supply hardware. And he walked, you know, he was found in the dump area, leaving fifty bucks a song. He didn't want to tell anybody he was in there. Uh, he did have a drug problem, I found out later on, and which caused him losing his soul. I had a homeless person that might property before that, uh, would come over and sleep in the flower bed and turn my water off at night, sleeping far away. I told him, um, um, on the, on the, and also he couldn't turn the water off. So he pulled a meter out of the control box. And it turned, come to find out he wasn't homeless. He had a home, he just like lived on the street. So there's a different wide variety of people that, that are out there and the ones causing the problem are probably the ones that can't help. So the community sees these people out there, you know, we can arrest them for being, uh, destroying our property, but we can't arrest them people. There's a lot more homeless, homeless out there abusing that and using terrorizing the communities of mine. So.
Well, and I think, I think that's a great point, uh, Mr. Chair. And I think it's, it's a, a point that needs to be made. I mean, there, there's criminality, right? There's, there's things that occur out there that are crimes and those crimes will be, um, addressed. You know, the local law enforcement does a wonderful job, um, addressing those crimes and, and dealing with that. Um, but again, uh, you know, I, I just want to, you know, kind of reiterate homeless isn't a crime. Um, there's some, there's just some people, you know, a lot of those people are out there and, you know, down on their luck, been, been in a bad situation and put it in a situation that's, uh, they're just trying to scrape and claw and trying to figure a way out. And that's where we come in to be able to provide that service and help, uh, you know, get that done. Um, the criminal element we'll deal with. Uh, and I, I know the commitment from the sheriff as well as our chief of police and, and other communities, you know, we'll, we'll deal with that element on its own.
I also just wanted to answer the question about the four hundred and twelve being eligible for the housing. And there is a distinction that I would just like to make. So the four hundred and twelve people counted in the point in time count. Those numbers are used for, for tracking purposes. They're submitted to the state and the federal government, but there is all, they, they aren't directly correlated to, um, referrals to housing programs. That's kind of a separate entity. Um, and that's, we, for that, we use our by name list, which goes off of our, um, our database. Um, and there are currently in Kings County, three hundred and forty-three people who are on the by name list. Mean they, meaning they have completed a housing assessment with a, an outreach worker. They are working on gathering their documents, um, to become eligible for housing. I just wanted to explain that distinction, um, cause I do think it's an, an important one. Um, the difference between a point in time, which is really just gathering that demographic information and then the people that are working with outreach teams and are, are pursuing the, the housing assistance or other services provided through the homeless response system.
And are they part of that four hundred and twelve?
Um, I, I would guess the majority are. The point in time, we do not compare apples to apples, person to person with the by name list. Um, so that's why, you know, you kind of have to see the point in time as its own entity that's just looking at numbers. If we're looking at, you know, number of people that are accessing resources, that are pursuing housing, that's its own, its own entity. Um, you know, we have to do a point in time count, um, to qualify for funding. Um, it's required by HUD, but it's really a different, a different entity than the population of people who are actively pursuing those resources.
Exactly. Perfect point I try to make. Even though we're counting four hundred and twelve that are homeless today, there's a bigger group out there that need help. So we don't want to focus.
Absolutely.
Well, if they're on the streets, we've probably got double that out there needing help that's on council couch. Yes. Exactly. Thank you.
Sure. I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge what you, yourself and your board has been through in order to support the efforts to expand housing in Kings County. I know it's been rough. I was in that meeting where six hundred people were really angry and I was part of why they were angry. And so I just want to thank you again for what you've done. Um, we need to expand, expand housing in every way that we possibly can and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
It's funny sometimes, but.
Uh, it's a question for, for Laura. Laura, in regards to the pit count, I know this is kind of a HUD criteria and I don't know if they've changed it or not, but i- if I'm part of the pit team that's counting and I know a person's homeless and I ask them if they're homeless, um, am I able to count them if they ignore me or they tell me no?
That's a great question. Thank you so much for asking that. The answer is really no. And the reason for that is we have no way, if you went out on Monday, um, and they said no, but you tick them off as I'm going to count that as one person and I go out the next day and maybe I have rapport with that person, um, and they're willing to talk to me and I count them, there's no way to deduplicate your count versus my count. So we do have some limited criteria that we require in order to, um, count someone in the pit count so that we can make sure that that number is as accurate as we are able to get it through the deduplication process. So that's why we opt for the survey count. They don't have to complete the whole survey, um, but we do ask for some information, some specific personal identification information, um, that we can use to deduplicate individuals.
Thank you. And then, and then this is just in, in reference to some of the comments made. Uh, Jeff, I want to compliment you on, on where you located the navigation center, uh, and the low barrier shelter. One of the first calls I made when you, when you came up with that location was to an appraiser, because there's a lot of sides to this equation and one side that doesn't get considered are the residents, right? So biggest asset most people have is their house. In many cases, that takes thirty years to pay and we don't want to negatively impact their appraisals. So in that case, at least the answer that was given to me was it was a net zero. So there was no impact on because of the bumper sale. So anyway, good selection and thank you. It was part of the reason why I supported that. So lastly, I, I just want to say how close to homeless is coming. Uh, once they go on the street, once a, a person becomes homeless, very difficult to get them off. I've lost personally, uh, uh, one of my employees of fifteen years died on the street. Uh, when I found out that he was on the street, I found him a job and, uh, and, and he stayed with that job for a few months. But at some point when he lost the job and, and he passed on the street. I had another employee whose son also passed on the street. So once again, uh, really grateful for, uh, the collective effort here because it, it touches a lot of people, a lot of different ways. But there's many sides to this equation and they all have to be looked at. Thank you.
And we'll really be thankful.
Amen. Well, Mr. Chair, members of board, thank you for your time. I know longer than we originally anticipated.
You know, we don't want to be the leaders of it. We want to handle itself and it's not going to handle itself. A lot of work happens, she inherited a lot. I know, paid one day, I feel bad for doing that. It's a bunch of things. Uh, it wasn't for, for grades, for desire or even on her job. So, um, felt bad for us and, uh.
Well, trust me when I say I'm honored to work with these people and it's exactly that. These are professions.
We make them a take as well. Uh, we tell them to do the drama and we tell them to do the governor's, uh, refund, I heard it gets done. But we should have stuck to the step roles and so I think that, that goes to the, uh, trying to fortify our and we live in the states somewhere about getting that bond. We should have, uh, looked through it. I think, um, if the governor had a tactical now, uh, trying to get that done. So we, we support the advocate down, talk, make up the moving. I think we can afford all that. I mean, we're not done. There's a lot of work to be done, one to finish.
Well, and our successes are your successes. We couldn't do it without the support of the board, um, and we know that. Um, and, uh, you know, we're going to continue to work hard and, and bring you some positive results as we move forward. So.
That will follow us in the future.
And the last comment I'll make is thank Mr. Notes for his time and his service on the collaborative. I know, uh, he's representative for your board, um, but, uh, appreciate all, all his dedication and commitment for the number of years that you've served and, uh, it's, it's building those relationships that are critical. So thank you.
Okay. Anything for the question, anybody in the audience? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to more different now to get that report. They must have our office, they said.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, wrapped up the fourth of July, uh, firework sales. Some of my folks did, uh, some of the sales around here, they started out kind of slow. Uh, but the court made it through state, but the, uh, sales bought up and pretty much. Continue to monitor the hot weather effects, uh, especially on, uh, changing and repair to that industry. Again, so they feel very effective, um, to, to meet the operation of demand. And the system has been performing well, depending on what's going on to the wind.
Uh, had the opportunity to take class, um, with the, uh, animal crossover disease. It was an online class, a surveillance webinar, um, discussing the, uh, H five N one bird flu and the avian influenza. They've, uh, been a worldwide outbreak, uh, now for about ten years. And since about March, a hundred and fifty-two dairy herds, uh, in thirteen states have also been crossed over and part of that, uh, influenza. Um, and it's also been concerning to health officials because that is crossed over and affected nine human infections as well from staff that have worked in both poultry and the, uh, the dairy, um, operations. Testing and surveillance will continue to happen. Uh, this is one thing that we've talked about literally for years. Um, and again, it took ten years to migrate from the, um, uh, poultry operations, um, and to cross over species, but, uh, we continue to watch that. Uh, we'll continue to meet, uh, with the, uh, Kings County Health, uh, Health Equity. Uh, we're, um, zeroing in on a couple of, uh, high, high, uh, concerns and how to address that, uh, for, for folks, uh, in the, uh, in the community. And then wrapped up the, uh, thirteen to sixteen-year-old Babe Ruth, uh, baseball tournament here in Hanford. Uh, the Hanford team, uh, was able to, um, take that tournament with Kingsburg coming in second. Both of them were able to move on to the Pacific Southwest Regional Tournament that starts in Tulare next Monday. Um, Kingsburg will start off on Monday, the twenty-second against a team from Guam. And Hanford will be the second, uh, game of, on the agenda, taking on Sparks, Nevada. And then that tournament will, will last five days and will, um, terminate on, uh, Saturday, the twenty-seventh. And then the, uh, blood drive, county blood drive that occurred on, uh, July eleventh, uh, collected twenty-seven units. Um, these, those blood drives are very, very important for the community. It's very important for staff. Certainly want to thank everybody that rolls up their arms and donates, uh, a pint. Um, this Friday, the Pint for Pint kicks off. It's not asking Robinson anymore. It's another brand of ice cream, but it's still ice cream. Um, and it's still, um, very, very nice to have on a hot day. So with that, if you've got the opportunity, roll up your sleeve. Um, the next county event will be September fifth. Uh, there is a pop-up, um, that is over at Adventist Health. It's, uh, twice a week. I think it's Wednesdays and Sundays or Thursdays and Sundays. Check the website and get the times. But, uh, blood, uh, supplies this time of year, vacations, it's hard to get people in and it's hard, but the demand never goes away. With that, thank you. Thank you. Much for you this.
Yeah. The week of the fourth, I was gone and this last week, I, after I got back, I just catch up with phone calls and call people to, uh, call back and answer to, uh, a lot of questions. Very good. Especially on water. Okay. Thank you.
Bud Valley. Of course, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Bud Robinson.
Tuesday, I attended the Armona Community Service District meeting. Uh, Wednesday, I attended, attended a meeting with Hanford Police Chief Stephanie Hellston, uh, who was the speaker. Unfortunately, uh, she informed us that violent crime was up thirty percent in the last year's time. So we all need to be aware of that. Uh, yesterday, uh, attended a Kings Tulare Agency on aging, aging meeting to discuss our annual budgeting.
Thank you. Uh, for myself, uh, Kerry Martinez and myself traveled to Tampa Bay, Florida for the National Association of Counties, uh, exposition and conference. It's one I've never been to before. Superfly for Peterson, while we go to it, it's where we sit down in our breakout session that we spend all day discussing, uh, policies that affect our counties. I spent all day Friday on, uh, Farm Bill and, uh, trying to get our input in there. It's, uh, eighty-six percent of the counties in the United States in one room, close to five thousand people. I think we had about twenty separate rooms. Uh, so you pick and choose what you need help with, with, uh, your county and you sit there and you put your two cents in. A lot of times we're way ahead of the rest of the country, uh, and a lot of times the rest of the country, they really don't care about our issues. So it's, it's good to be there, please share your thoughts. I spoke a couple of times and then we had a big exposition. So all the vendors that deal with us were there. And it's a good way to, to talk about issues that affect your county. One thing I did learn that I think may be effective in the future would be, uh, in negotiations. And, uh, one of the counties that's near us, they share what each one offers on the negotiating side. So there's no, there's no misinformation out there. And so if we offer somebody, you know, say fifteen percent and, uh, they can't say we didn't offer. So it might, might take away, might clear it up a little bit more. So we'll look at that in the future. And, uh, I left on, uh, Thursday evening, got there and got back last night. So I thank you for the board for allowing me to go. I'd like to go next year if I could. And, uh, I'll be on a committee for the, the, there's an opening on the ad committee in California. So, um, trying to get on that right now. Well, thank you. Uh, Ms. Martinez, uh, board correspondent, get your board agendas.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanted to take a quick minute. I don't normally say anything, but, um, for myself, but yes, I thank you for the board for allowing me to go. I actually do sit on the NACO Finance Pension Intergovernmental Committee. So I'm a representative for California and, um, we had actually nineteen action items that we passed forward. We get a lot of inside information on what's happening on the federal side with the U.S. Treasury and things like that. So it's very insightful. Um, and so I was appointed earlier last year, so.
Yeah. I forgot one major thing. I wanted to go this year because California, it's going to be, the president is talking about Jim Gore. We loved him last year. And so he will be the president for, if he doesn't. he will be the president for a committee next month, yesterday, hold. So, we'll have access to the President of the United States for a while, and he's open for conversation. I talk to him regularly on the cell phone. So, if there's anything I need federally, he can be at the South Hill Sec Office. And I got brought up multiple times in multiple meetings for my candid humor. So, it's a good relationship to have. It's always built on, so thank, sorry about that.
Sue Rizer, James Gore is a member of our California, of, of, our Latino caucus, California County, and former president out of Sonoma County. He's a good guy. He's a good guy, and his family makes a good lot, too.
So, for board correspondence, your board received correspondence from Amplio Services dated June twenty-first regarding maximizing funding for the county. The board also received notice of consolidated board member election from the Kings County Office of Education on July third. The board received public notice regarding an extension of public comment period regarding the proposal renewal of hazardous waste facility permit for Kettleman Hills facility. On July eighth, the board received correspondence from Procure America regarding cost reduction strategy services, which was received July eleventh. And the board received the following correspondence and reports from the Kings County Department of Finance. The Treasurers Report of Cash and Investments for February, March, April, May, all received on July eighth. The monthly fund balance report February, for February, March, April, May, twenty twenty-four, all received on July eighth. And the June twenty twenty-four monthly Kings County Investment Pool Transaction Activity Report received July second. For upcoming events, Behavioral Health will host its family member support group tonight, Tuesday, July sixteenth, from five thirty, seven thirty, here on campus. Library will host their movie time at the Corcoran Branch Library tomorrow, Wednesday, July seventeenth, from three thirty to five thirty. And Library will host its Maker Monday at the Hanford Branch Library next Monday, July twenty-second, from three thirty to four thirty, where they will do firework painting. Behavioral Health will host its Veterans Support Group next Tuesday from five thirty to seven thirty at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Hanford. And lastly, Department Child Support Services will host its Kids Day Event to celebrate Child Support Awareness Month, Thursday, August first, from three to seven PM on the downtown office. This outreach event is open to the public. For upcoming events for July twenty-third, administration has an item on multiple appointments to boards, behavioral housing agreement for some family urgent response services. CDA has a public hearing for a license in Kettleman City, public sales for alcohol in Kettleman City, and public hearing for density bonus agreement. County Council has an agreement regarding some publishing corporation to provide resources for legal research. Health has an item for a Bakersfield College internship agreement. Human Resources has a salary resolution. Human Services Agency has an agreement with Fresno Pacific University for internship. Probation has an item regarding probation service week, and Public Works has a few items for an American Disability Act week. And lastly, Sheriff has an agreement with Motorola. So, we do have a few, quite a few items for the next board meeting. I conclude my report.
Meeting on June twenty-ninth, July twenty-ninth. Chuck, pour water. Have we advertised that? Okay, all right. We'll bring it back to you then.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to adjourn to the closed session as outlined. And do you have any reporting out? And we'll adjourn until next Tuesday. No questions. Thank you very much.